Betty, are you ready?
(laughing).
Then I'll call Commissioner Order. Do we have any minister reports?
I do have the county clerk's fees and the collector's fees for September 2014 was filed.
Okay. Commissioner Committee lays on reports, announcements of upcoming meetings and/or events. I'm meeting with the HBA Community Achievement Awards Committee tonight. I guess their... HBA is doing a community achievement award and they asked me to serve on a committee.
There is a RPC luncheon today in Old Summit with Congressman Luke DeMar.
You going to that?
Yes.
Good. I cannot.
Poverty Simulation is today.
Tomorrow is...
Two to five.
Tomorrow at one is the tabletop exercise dealing with Health Department.
Yeah.
Another ironically follow-up to what happened last week. A planned tabletop as opposed to what we had before.
Are we supposed to attend that or...
I'm gonna try to attend it.
Okay.
We have a ED Executive Team meeting Monday morning, Chamber. Chamber Board meeting on Tuesday. That's what I got. Okay. First item on the agenda is the renewal of the health insurance for 2015 by Wall Street. Joe, need a microphone.
Thanks.
I see Debbie has one in front of her. I guess she's gonna talk to him.
No, I don't think he did that. You know how much I love those. We had a lot of takeaways last week from the meeting, so I've gone through each one of them individually to answer your questions and then if you have anything else that you need me to check, I will tell you that a couple of the reports are called ad hoc reports and we have not been able to get those yet. They're still working on them, but I think we got you enough workable numbers to make the decisions that we need to make on the out-of-pocket for the RX and then how to handle the RX itself. And I think those were our major takeaways, that and looking at putting everyone on one plan versus having the two plans. Am I correct?
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll start out. One of the questions asked was what would the cost savings be if the entire county enrollment was on the high deductible HSA and we did not have that traditional PPO plan? Surprisingly, they said the reduction in claims was only approximately 4% because we do have a rich, high deductible plan. So what they've told us is they've completed...
What's our estimated total claims then? Four percent, so it would be a reduction of 4%.
Over...
Which is how much?
Of the claims...
Of real dollars.
Well...
How much is that in real dollars? Estimated, I mean, what do we estimate our total claims to be?
Well, our stop-loss point is 2.4 million.
Okay.
On estimated. That's if we went to the max of what we could go to.
So the max savings would be 4% of 2.4 million.
Of 2.4 million.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Uh-huh. So with that said, unless we would change the HSA to make it, you know, deeper into the hole, so to speak, where you wouldn't have that rich program, you probably are better off to keep your two plans right now if it's an affordable thing to do. Because with your people, I think we've got a lot of feedback from the last meeting. I don't know how many calls you got, but I know that...
I'm engaged, yeah.
There were several things said after the meeting and that for the folks who don't make as much money and do have their families on, that the high deductible plan is pretty steep for them if they would have to hit that deductible. Because that is a non-embedded deductible. So if you're on as a single person, you meet that single deductible just like you do on a PPO plan. But if you have any family members on with you, you're gonna meet that family deductible.
Right.
So...
Seven thousand dollars.
Well, 7,000 out-of-pocket deductible, I believe, is five. So any event, and with children and that, you know, sometimes you can just have that one major event and they'd have to come up with that 5,000 deductible. And then after that, you're paying only co-pays for medication because medical is covered at 100% at that point. Once you meet that family deductible, then it's covered at 100% for everyone in that family, but that first event can go up to that full $5,000. So it's a consideration for your folks that don't make as much money and who are living paycheck to paycheck.
Debbie, how much do we currently put into people's accounts for...
Eighty-eight, eighty-nine, I believe, yeah.
Okay. That's just rough.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You ready to move on? Or do you have any more questions on that? Any more takeaways that I can get you more information?
What's the difference in the premium gonna end up being...
We won't be changing the premium this year.
So the amount we contribute will be exactly the same?
Mm-hmm. Correct. Because we had such a minimal change, it ends up being about a dollar a month.
Okay. So that the amount that we contribute stays the same?
Correct.
That was...
Correct.
Okay.
Joe, what did we find out about the, you know, the prescription plan? You said that was gonna have to be included in the deductible somewhere.
This year, because of healthcare reform and the Affordable Care Act, all co-pays will apply to out-of-pocket now, so if they have a $200 co-pay for the ER, that will apply to out-of-pocket and that was gone money before for that traditional plan. If you have that office visit co-pay, that's going to apply to the out-of-pocket. And we talked about leaving the medical out-of-pocket exactly as it is.
Right.
But you're also going to have the pharmaceutical drug co-pays applying to that out-of-pocket this year. With the cost of medications, that's why we suggested we have a separate bucket, so to speak, where they would accumulate the co-pays for the RX. So that you're, in essence, not changing the person's medical plan at all. You're only accumulating those out-of-pockets on the RX, which was gone money to the member on the PPO plan before. You're just putting some protection in there for the county because if you have all of the offices of co-pays and every RX co-pay going to that one out-of-pocket, unless you just simply raise that out-of-pocket, you're gonna get there a lot faster. And then that's gonna be more money out of the claim fund to pay those claims. And as we go down a little further, I did break out people who met deductible. You'd asked that question. So in-network members and dependents met $54,605.51 toward their in-network deductible on the traditional plan. That amounted to 31 individuals, whether it was a member or a dependent. It was a member or a subscriber. Because they come out separately on the PPO plan, each individual person can meet 1,000 or a family jointly can meet the two. So if you have four family members and three people each have claims, you know, six, $800, $900, they could meet it before one individual meet 1,000.
Okay.
So on that PPO, traditional plan, 31 members met that. Family deductible costs, and keep in mind that individual travels over to that family, there were only two families that met the full family deductible of $2,000.
Do you know how many of those 31 are employees versus dependents?
I did not count them, but I do have a breakout report that I can give you.
Do you have ballpark what, just in your, top of your head, is that majority employees...
I would say majority are employees, yes.
Okay.
Because we have majority of employees on our plan.
That's what I thought.
You know, we don't have that many dependents. On the high deductible plan, $83,871.63 went toward that in-network deductible. Ten people met the $2,500 individual deductible. Family costs were just a slight bit higher and four families met the $5,000 family deductible on the HSA plan. And then we did have some out-of-network claims that amounted to just shy of $10,000 in deductible. And remember, that deductible accumulates separately from in-network.
You got any recommendations on anything that we asked for you to... What we might should do?
Well, you had asked me if all of the RXs were just flat out the 25%. I'm waiting on the ad hoc report on it, but just doing rough numbers over what we spent on the reports that we have so far, which is the half-year we're waiting on third quarter. You would have, at 25%, excuse me, we would have spent $46,404. And in co-pays, we spent $44,948. So the difference is just about $1,400 and some odd dollars between that. So I think you're better off...
But isn't that gonna be different going forward into 15, yeah?
Well, on... Correct. And on this, when we talk about the specialty medications, as we saw in that report last week, one drug that was costing just shy of $6,000 a month was a $15 co-pay because of where it fell in the formulary. Whereas if we use the specialty listing and we do the 25 or 20% or whatever you would decide on those specialty meds, you're gonna capture more return on those since they're your highest dollar med going out. And you don't have a ton of people that are using those medications.
Are you talking PPO, not HSA on this, right?
When we talk about the RX, we're talking about both plans on that specialty medication.
Well, and I'm one of the people that met a deductible. And my medical deductible was one and my pharmaceutical was money on top of that.
Correct.
It included it, but it raised it significantly.
It's $1,000.
Right.
You pay medical and pharmaceutical all costs until you meet the $2,500.
And then...
And then you pay co-pays.
Co-pay.
Co-pays to the next $1,000. So you're not paying the full price of medications for that extra $1,000. You're paying your co-pays only.
Well, and in all honesty, if you use that same figure regardless if you pay the co-pay or you pay the market value of it, you're going to hit that deductible much faster paying the market. And whether you take that portion out or not, the other result was is that my personal deductible was $3,800.
Should not have been. $3,500 is your max deductible. If you've paid anything above that, then I need to know so I can check it.
Is it $2,500 or $2,800 of the medical?
Twenty-five.
Okay. And then it's a thousand more.
It's a thousand in those co-pays. Today, those co-pays are only $10, $30, and $50. Most people are not gonna spend another $1,000 in $10, $30, and $50 co-pays.
Got any recommendations?
Generally speaking, unless you're just taking a ton of medications.
Well, I don't. There's a couple that are...
That $12,000.
But you should be getting those for the co-pay if they're on the formulary. You should be getting them for either $10, $30, or $50 if they're on the formulary.
Mm-hmm.
Are they on the formulary?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
But it's...
But if you're taking the $50 medication, sure. You know, 12 months of that, $600.
I like... But it's not 12 months because if you're going to, if it starts in January...
With this.
But if you had that catastrophic claim in January, you could meet your $2,500 and then have to buy your medications throughout the year.
But if you have a catastrophic...
I just say...
You're gonna max out your medical supply.
Yes.
But for most people, you're not gonna have a catastrophic issue.
Usually not.
4% comes out of $1,000.
It's one thing for me as an office holder...
Is this something he needs to just go talk to them about? Or is this something that has something to do with what we're...
But they're still...
Hey, Greg. Hey, Joe.
Yes.
Can you guys take this outside when it's over? I don't mean to, but you're getting real into your issues and we're...
And the effect on my employees that they have a much lesser salary.
Well, and that's, that's...
Well, that's what I was asking. If that had to do with just what you were charged.
We are not proposing to change your regular co-pays on your two-plan designs. We're not proposing that you change those three tiers as they stand today, only to add that fourth tier on that specialty medication.
Okay.
So it won't change the way it accumulates or anything. If you don't change your out-of-pocket, you just have to know that they're going to reach that out-of-pocket. Many more people are gonna reach that when all those co-pays are going in there and you're looking at more expense for the county.
When you say specialty med, is that something that they have an option of a generic, but they wanna take the specialty med? Does that mean they have some kind of special...
Sometimes, but not always. Sometimes, but not always. Specialties are mostly what we're now calling these nuclear medications. You hear Enbrel on the TV at night, Sinogys.
I watch commercials.
Well, okay, a lot of the medications that are self-injectables for rheumatoid arthritis, for MS, for psoriatic things...
So they have, it's not that they have an option. That's what I was getting at. They don't have an option every time, but sometimes...
Not every time. Sometimes you have an option to a pill form.
Because I don't wanna punish them if they have to take the pill.
Sure. You can take a pill in some, but most of these are going to be your progressive medications that have come to the marketplace that are really high-dollar.
Yeah, that's all, that's all it is. Too many campaign ads on TV for me to even watch those commercials, politics stuff. So I think that's the only question I had. We can't encourage you to be there. Are we making a decision on this today or was this just you're getting some more information?
Um, I'm...
We're just making a decision.
They're hoping for a decision so we can get to meetings and that and get you guys ready to go.
Yeah, you gotta make a choice. Come on.
I said I was voting no all day, so it don't matter.
Okay.
Royals lost last night. He's voting no all day.
No, I'm just kidding.
He's a Carter fan.
But again...
Oh, you guys, the blue shirts are the Royals fans.
I wore them yesterday.
Don't get blue on.
I was red and white yesterday.
But the $10, $30, $50, one, two, three tiers on your high deductible plan and the $15, $35, $60 on your traditional plan for the co-pays, tiers one, two, and three, we're not proposing that you make any change to that. You continue with the two and a half times those co-pays if they wanna use mail order. We really encourage mail order because it's a savings to the county and to the individual. What we've really just brought to the forefront and let you make a decision on it is with the out-of-pocket for the RX, because you know all those co-pays are going to apply now and they did not apply before. And then to take a look at that specialty medication, do you wanna add that tier four and it would only be those specialty meds? And you would decide on a percentage and then generally a max limit because you don't wanna take one person and kill them just on a percentage. So you limit that co-pay. It's just higher. And you don't have to make any changes at all if you don't want to.
And we have relative, relatively few people that use that.
I think, what did we have, 10 on the list the other day?
Yeah, you printed a report out, yeah.
And that was not as many members.
Yeah.
I think there were three or four members. We had more before first quarter. We had $33,000 in those medications and I've kinda listed that out for you in that memo. But then second quarter, we only had about $4,700. So...
That was what we got last week.
It's also in here.
Oh, is it in here too?
Yeah. It's on page two before I've answered your questions.
Oh, yeah, there it is.
And we're doing great with generic usage. We have 84.9% use of generics. So that is terrific use of the generic. But when you look at the cost between the two, you have 15.1% use of brand name.
They make up, yeah, 50%.
They make up the biggest part of your cost.
But you can just, just those few big ones skew that just by themselves.
Correct.
And it doesn't include the ones that are off the formulary?
No, because...
Because they won't fall in here.
No. Off-formulary, people are just paying for that out of their pocket to take that medication. It doesn't count toward anything.
Right.
Do most generics fall in tier one or...
Most, but as we saw last week, that one specialty was falling under a generic, but yet it was a really high-dollar medication.
And what is the thought process behind the high deductible prescription co-pays being lower than the PPO?
When that hot, when the high deductible plan was brought out, this is the package, so to speak, that United had with that. We can change that RX card, but it's been this way. So I mean, that's another thing that you guys can change. But I guess to explain, you know, before when we talked about the fully insured product, we'd say, okay, if we tweak this drug card a little bit, that'll give us a point off our rate. We're not dealing with that any longer. We're not going to be tweaking our rate. What we're doing is tweaking what the expenses could be.
It's not fixed.
Because of course, the more the individual is paying, the less that the county is paying toward the claim fund. So...
I mean, in general, I'm good with the 25% to the max of 200, especially for specialty medication.
I agree. I mean, it's, it's gotta be a pretty high-dollar medication to even get up to that 200.
Right.
And I will pass that list out when we do enrollment so everybody will be aware. If your doctor prescribes this, you know, this is where you're gonna be on it. You might wanna talk with them and see what else you can do. Some medications, your beta cerons and things like that, you don't have a choice, you know, but you're still making that limit at the $200 per fill. And now, where those co-pays did not apply before, even at the $60, this full 200 will apply. So the other question is, do you want to change and have that separate bucket for out-of-pocket on pharmacy? You are allowed to do that because of the way the Affordable Care has come forth.
Right.
And I gave you numerous different choices on the other piece of paper there, showed you different ways to do it.
I think we have to do that. I mean, you know, we can't...
Today, the out-of-pocket for the HSA plan, the members who are on that do have to mean an additional $1,000 in out-of-pocket for their RX. So on one of those samples I showed you, I didn't change anything on the HSA, but did add $1,000 out-of-pocket for the PPO plan for medications, just as an example to kinda make it even, so to speak, because HSA people have to meet that extra 1,000. This way, PPO people would meet that as well. You can do a combination of anything you want or you can do nothing at all. It's totally up to you.
I mean, I, I think, I mean, again, I'm good with the 25% to the max 200.
Okay.
I think we should, I think we should take a look at raising the co-pays on the prescriptions just so that people have more skin in the game. And I really would like to see us raise the emergency room visit to $200.
Emergency is 200 now. I did give you some numbers on that, the last bullet point.
I thought it was 100.
No, it's two. It's two today. And I did give you some facts on that. We did have 214 so far this year. Of those 214, 74 cases were considered not true emergency.
Which means what?
It means that the diagnosis code that was given at the time of the service said that they really didn't believe that person had to use that ER. But again, we have the Prudent Person Act in the state of Missouri. And let's say that I have bronchitis and I'm sick, but I'm able to go to work Thursday and Friday and I manage through. But Sunday morning, I get up and I can't breathe. I mean, I literally feel like I'm suffocating. To me, as a prudent person, I think I better go. I'm very afraid my windpipe is going to close off. But when I get there, if all they diagnosed me as is bronchitis, that can be considered not true emergency because I could've waited until, you know, Monday and gone to the urgent care or to my doctor. So the coding on it that they used, they considered there's not true. The cost on those to the county, though, was just shy, just a little over $5,000.
That's less than, that's around 70 bucks per claim extra is all.
Correct.
I don't see that as a big...
There were 141 of those considered to be true medical emergencies. They cost the county $32,600 change.
If you try to tell Mama Bear not to take Junior to the emergency room because he's hacking up stuff and it doesn't turn to be something...
Exactly.
But the reason that the emergency, the true emergency visits will be more expensive is because they're true emergencies. If you're in a car accident and you go to the emergency room...
Correct.
And you're seriously injured, they're gonna spend a lot of money in the emergency room working on you. If you go in because you got 101-degree fever and you're a baby about it, you just don't like being cold on Sunday morning, they're not gonna pay, they're not gonna spend as much money on you because they're gonna take a look at you, they're gonna say, you know, okay, you need to take some antibiotics at home.
But then you let them decide it's not a true emergency. It's not Mama Bear sitting there with Junior going, you know...
But, but there's no, you know, there's no comeback to a person who uses the emergency room is the problem. And I, that's where I agree with Chris. I mean, I think going to the emergency room should be a decision that people don't take lightly.
Well, there are several trains of thought.
I don't think it's that bad, though.
Um, if, for the state, because I know you all contend with state benefits against your benefits, for the state, if it's deemed a not true emergency, they're going to pay their co-pay and they're gonna pay a $100 penalty. But then it's a decision of, who makes that decision if it's not true emergency? You know, does the coding come through as that and that's how you apply that penalty? Or do you raise the emergency room co-pay or do you add some coinsurance to that? Those are things that the carriers at large on your fully insured products are doing. They're raising the co-pay or they're including, they're saying co-pay plus 20% for instance since we have an 80/20 plan. They're doing that as well. So there are a couple of trains of thought there. I think more education as to what urgent cares are open on the weekend and trying to give the folks the hours, I think that'll be part of our package again this year to try to encourage people to not use the ER.
I don't disagree with trying to encourage them to be a little more thoughtful in their process, but I don't see that as being a big-cost item. We, $5,200 for people that were not actually admitted and we're still gonna have some costs. I mean, that's not additional costs. If they wait and go to the doctor the next day, we're still gonna have a portion of that cost that we have to...
Sure, they're gonna have their co-pay, but you're gonna still have some.
I don't see that as being a big issue right now.
How much of that money we paid out was PPO and how much of that money we paid out was HSA?
I've asked for the breakout. I don't have it.
They don't have it?
Again, it's an ad hoc because they have to separate them. So those ad hocks just take longer. But I have asked for the breakout for you because I knew you'd ask.
The thing about it is, though, too, is that, yeah, it's $5,200, but we're directly paying those claims, so it's $5,200 coming out of our money that we've got set aside. So, you know...
They've had to pay their $300 co-pay for going there. Our $200 co-pay. $200 co-pay, but, you know, then that's the portion that was charged off.
I was thinking of that 100, so...
Yeah, it's at two right now.
I'm good with it.
And I will tell you that two is a low co-pay for ER.
What's, what are, what's the state and the city use as co-pays?
Hmm, I think this, I think the state is three, but I'm not positive. Do you know?
Yeah, I thought that's what we said yesterday.
I thought that was three.
What's the cities?
I thought that's what Mr. Bushman told me was, it was three.
What's the cities?
City, I don't know. City...
I think is what they're proposing.
City is making some changes, so I don't know yet.
The 200 is what they're, David, you said it's what they proposed.
That's what they proposed.
They said the meeting, we had a meeting yesterday about this, so I think it was two, it was 200, 250, it wasn't, it wasn't 300.
Sorry to put you on the spot there.
That's all right. My wife asked me too.
I just don't think it's out of hand right now, so I don't have a problem leaving it be. Let's keep an eye on it.
Yeah, if it's a 200, I'm good to leave it there.
I don't have a problem with that.
Let them know the more about the urgent cares and stuff and try to be...
Well, I mean, part of, when I talk to everyone, part of the meetings are about, you know, this is what we found last year as we went through the claim reports. So we'll talk about the fact that there were non-emergent visits. You have these alternatives. I don't know if you have heard that in Columbia, the university has put in some Mediquic clinics in the Hy-Vee stores. There's talk of doing something here, too, so that would be another outlet.
Maybe we let our health department take care of some of it.
She's not here.
Well, you have animal control while we're at it, too. If we're gonna pick on health department today, golly.
Just turn it to an urgent...
Yeah, yeah, there you go.
Greg, which part were you saying you had concerns about affecting the employees the most?
I have concerns about raising the 3,500, even hundreds of that if you're on the HSA.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'll tell you where I'm at, just as a general statement. I don't wanna see any changes to the HSA plan. I think we need to encourage people to get on the HSA plan. From what you originally presented, Joe, last week, as opposed to these other options that you, that you did, and I very much appreciate those other options, what I would prefer to do is keep the HSA as is and take your recommendation from last week on the PPO.
To do the full?
To do the full. PPOs are long, short-term, you know, they are what they are. Long-term, they're a, they're gonna end up costing the county a lot of money long-term. HSAs are gonna be much more cost savings for the county long-term. Short-term, it's incremental.
Mm-hmm.
But long-term, it's a big difference because long-term, it makes people invested in their healthcare decisions and a PPO does not invest you in those. And I think that's critical for the health of doing this going forward. If we were not a self-funded plan, then it's just a question of how much you pay in the insurance premium, but we're self-funded. It makes a bigger difference now and that goes long-term to the budget.
But last week's proposed...
I don't wanna take her proposal on the HSA.
HSA.
He wants to leave the HSA as is, which basically, if you went to the second one that I gave you today, instead of doing just 1,000 on that PPO, we would go the full 3,600 and then 72 on family. And again, those were gone co-pays before. They would've been being paid anyway. You're just giving away for it to come to a maximum, but you're not really changing any... but you're not really changing anyone's benefit other than that $200 max on the tier four drug. That would be the only change you're really making.
I just think it makes people be invested in their healthcare decisions. I guess we'll win you more. That's where I'm at on it.
Silence rules the day.
In general, I'm, I'm good with that. So we're looking at page one for the PPO. Is that correct?
Which one are you, which packet are you looking at? Today's packet or last week's packet?
Yeah, today's packet, yeah.
Page one on the traditional.
Okay.
And then, Joe, is page two on the HSA a no change?
Correct.
That's exactly what.
You actually have a choose your own adventure page at the very end, where we can just write in what you guys.
But it's a no change.
Correct.
Right.
Correct.
So that's what I would propose.
Page two.
Page two for.
Two on the H, on the HSA, and then.
For the HSA, which is the same, no change.
I hate this stuff. We've got so many damn numbers here. I'm sorry.
So, Joe, just go through. The traditional would then mean what we're proposing is the same deductible of the 1,000 and then 80-20 up to an additional 2,000, which would bring you to your 3,000 medical.
Correct. That's the medical out of pocket.
Medical out of pocket. Would be the same as what we have today. The only big change on the traditional would be the.
The 20% on the tier four. That's the only thing.
Yes, 20% and the out of pocket.
Well, you're going to add that, but it's going to be collected in a separate deduct, a separate out of pocket bucket, so to speak. So if they meet the $3,000, their medical is still going to be at 100%.
Right. But their prescriptions, the 15, 35, 60, are the $200 or 25%.
Are going to add up to this additional $3,600.
Okay.
And then it would put a ceiling on prescription RXs where today there is no ceiling.
Right.
Members would pay whatever forever.
Right.
So it, basically, it's a plus, because it's not going to penalize anybody at all.
No.
Because these benefits, the core benefits, are all going to stay exactly the same. It is just going to accumulate the cost of those RXs. It doesn't accumulate anywhere today.
Right.
It's just lost money. The only real change will be that max $200, 25%.
Basically, we're trying to encourage people to get on the HSA because they're going to pay more, especially if they're heavily.
Right, you're getting to the three quicker.
Take a lot of prescriptions.
They do, true, because those were lost monies again.
Right.
And so the HSA.
We're not going to change anything.
Right.
So the PPO, you said, basically, there's no changes, but it does help them get to the 3,000 quicker?
Because their copays are going to go in there.
Okay, so it's not going to affect the employees.
It's a positive effect on the copays going into their out of pocket max and not changing that everyday out of pocket max.
Not so much on the drugs with the fourth tier, but, and the higher out of pocket.
So I'm, now I'm confused.
Okay.
I thought I was, well, I thought I had this thing kind of in hand. What I would like to see is a structure that, that encourages people to move to the HSA. That makes the PPO a less positive plan to be in.
This really does.
But now I'm hearing it's not. It's actually a benefit to people in the PPO, which makes the PPO more attractive. Therefore, less people will go to.
But in the other one, that originally, they're going to have to come up with 3,000. In the HSA, you're going to have to come up with 2,500, plus the county's still putting in 1,000 for them. So the HSA is still truly.
It's still the most attractive plan. If people will move to it, and it's a scary move for individuals when they don't have that copay, because our culture is everything has to be at a copay. But when you look at a $2,500 medical deductible and the county is putting in just shy of $100 a month, the money you're looking at coming out of your pocket is far less than what you're looking at on that traditional plan.
So it is more attractive, and we'll harp on it more at meetings just to encourage them, but.
But you were sitting there talking about how there's this benefit out of the PPO and make the change.
Well, on the, no. On the PPO plan, today, when you go to, if you're on the PPO plan, and I go to the doctor and I pay a $60 copay, that copay's lost money. It doesn't go anywhere. Now.
Whoa, whoa, whoa. Lost money didn't make any sense.
Yeah.
Somebody gets the check.
Well.
Well, but I mean, it doesn't count toward deductible. It doesn't count toward out of pocket.
But it reduces the county's cost.
Yes.
Because they're going to apply the discount.
Sure, they'll apply the discount, apply the copay.
And then they'll take the copay out, so it reduces the exposure to the county.
Correct, but the individual, I'm talking about the consumer themselves, that $60 copay was just paid money, and they didn't get any credit for that. Because of healthcare reform, that is now going to apply to that $3,000 out of pocket max. So that's why Debbie said that was actually a plus to them, because those copays now will accumulate someplace where they did not before.
They will apply towards their deductibles.
Not deductible, out of pocket maximum.
Okay.
Sorry, I said that wrong.
That's, it's really confusing, but yes, out of pocket maximum is where they will apply.
Okay.
So I guess, do you guys have to vote on these changes? Does this?
I'm sure we do.
Okay.
So I got one more question on prescription out of pockets. And so we're proposing $3,600 pharmacy out of pocket maximum. How does that, if we do that today for 2015, how does that change from where we are currently?
Today, if you get a medication and it's, let's say, a $60 copay, you're just paying that $60 copay, you have no credit for it anyplace.
Okay.
You make this change, instead of that applying to that 3,000, because all copays, whether medical or pharmaceutical, will apply to out of pocket maximum now. So if you were having those 60s go in here, as well as that $60 copay for the doctor and that, you can see how quickly you would reach the 3,000.
Right.
By putting the separate out of pocket maximum on the medications, then you're not affecting your medical.
Right.
You're only collecting those copays on those RXs in a separate bucket, still not to exceed the federal limitation of $6,600.
But if I'm on a PPO today, and I go every day and I get a $60 prescription, I never get a cap.
You do get a cap at $3,600. Oh, today, no. Today, no.
No, I pay it.
You pay it.
All year long, all year long, and I never get a cap. Okay, that's what I want to know.
Starting in January.
Correct.
When you hit that $3,600 cap, then we start paying. So if you go every day.
Right.
If you go every day on day.
We're going to be looking you up.
He'll be one of those, what we call the shoppers. Going to a different doctor every day to get a new drug.
Day 61.
Yep.
Normally, you cannot fill a medication more than 30 days apart.
I understand, I understand. If it was a different medication, though, you probably could.
Well, or if it's a injectable or something that goes that you have to take every other week.
But it's still filled by a monthly.
Your $200 cap, so, you know, you're very quickly going to hit that 3,600.
Some of those are under medical and not under prescriptions.
$200, $200, you know, it's going to come.
Times 12 months, you're at $2,400.
So really, it's no change to anybody. It's just who's paying the bill. I mean, yeah, I mean, ultimately, we're always going to pay more.
We, this is a change that the federal law has mandated that shuttles more costs to the employer.
In this case, the employer, because you're suffering.
The goal of the ACA is to harm employers. And that's the underlying goal.
No, because they get all sorts of exceptions. Employers don't get exceptions. It's designed to harm employers.
It is.
It's the reason the economy doesn't grow, is because everything out there we do is to hurt employers. Shocking, but.
I'm just going to repeat what I think you guys are wanting to approve here as far as the traditional plan, leaving it the same except for adding the fourth tier with the $200 cap, 25% up to a $200 cap, and implementing the prescription out of pocket to the 3,600.
As a separate bucket.
As a separate bucket. High deductible, keeping it exactly the same, with adding just the fourth tier, which is the 25% up to $200. And that, if there's any talk about changing the emergency room from 200 to 250, or would you like to leave that alone?
I prefer to leave it alone.
I'm good with it at 200. I thought we were at 100, so.
I'm good with that, Tim.
Okay. So.
Yeah, I'm good with what you said, David.
You need a motion on that, Dave?
Yes, please.
I would so move.
Okay, second.
Any discussion? Call roll, please, Ben.
Mark?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
Hey! Roll call voted approves. We've put this behind us now. Thank God. Joe?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Much as, much as you probably don't believe this, thank you for all your service in the years I've been up here. I, I.
Thank you, Mark.
Not always agreed, and some of our meetings have been contentious, but you've always given us good information.
Thank you.
And good guidance, so thank you.
Not going to change anything for the employees.
No. The, the fourth tier will be the change.
Right.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you, Mark.
Thank you very much again, Joe.
Thank you.
The meeting's next week.
And with no offense, I won't miss seeing you next year. Because I don't want to have to.
You'll just go by the office for coffee.
I don't have to deal with, that'll be fun, because I don't want to deal with this issue again. Your guys' turn next time.
And if Sam calls you, you're just going to leave him out there on the limb, right?
No hobbling, please.
Take a message. Tell him I'm calling back.
Next item on the agenda is 911 agreement with Jefferson City. I don't even know what this is.
Debbie circulated.
I just got the email last night.
An email from the city and had the, was that a contract or was that just a letter?
There is no contract. It just automatically renews by inaction, so to speak.
Right.
So that's our, that's our cost.
Our cost on that was what, 354,000?
348.
Yeah, somewhere around that, without capital. I didn't know what they were.
Uh, that's the letter. There is no change after that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it didn't show any capital in.
It did not.
In that budget, so.
Okay.
I would assume that, I mean, they would, they would.
They may not have approved it, too, council. But I'm saying they may not have approved capital, so.
When are they doing them upgrades then? Is that going to be a whole separate?
We have our con, we have our letter, we have our contract, we have our numbers.
That's the end of it.
Is that the way you see it?
Yeah.
That's what I see it.
So if they do $200,000 worth of capital upgrades, then we're not on the hook for any of it?
We're not on the hook for it.
What I understood, well, that's the budget, and that's what they're submitting to.
Well, they can come back and get it the following year.
They can come back the next year, but then you guys can go through the discussion of do we want to renew it?
Well, I'm just saying, I don't.
I'll confirm that with Joe.
If they want to, they can say, here, y'all take 911. I don't want it. I, I don't think.
Come on, Joe.
Just saying.
Put you in charge of that.
It's a lot, it's a heck of a lot of money to be paying for it, but it's, I mean, I'm not saying it's a great deal, but it's a deal not to have to mess with the headaches.
But I think every year, you should reevaluate it.
And I disagree with that, so.
I think that was a mistake we made a couple of years, is where we just kind of let it slide by without having any depth reevaluation. I think we should do that every time. Okay. Courthouse window repair. I think that's you, Greg.
Yeah.
God, we must have been talking about health insurance, because my coffee disappeared fast.
Greg, can you hit that light right there?
Greg, could you hit that light switch, please? Thank you.
This started when we did the courthouse, the masonry repair, and ceiling of the outside windows to the metal frames, to the stonework. Since then, we've been fighting water infiltration into our buildings, including the annex, as Mark has seen in the stairwell and some other places. Dealing with, talking with Dave, excuse me, Dave out of Brady's, we've been looking at the windows pretty well extensively. His thought is, when they were installed back in the 70s, they should have put a seal pan underneath them windows and with weep holes coming out. Talking with Dave, he said the option to do that is to pull the windows completely out, put a new seal pan in, and we all know that's going to be a very big expense for both of these buildings. His suggestion is, we come back, we pull out the rubber gaskets around, holding the windows in, silicone them in, and maybe putting some weep holes in just to let the water get out.
What's up here?
That, there in the corner where you see the gasket has tore loose, and that's about 95% of our windows in this, these two buildings have done that.
So if he were to put a weep hole, I assume at the bottom of the jam where it's caulked?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, how's the water going to get back out?
Well, that's what he's going to do. You went too far. Go back a couple pictures. Go back one more. Down at, well, I'm sorry, down at the bottom corner where the, you got the, where it's been caulked in at the bottom of the window frame, they'll just put a small hole right there at the bottom. That way, you let the water back out if it does get in after they seal, seal up those window panes. And then the other option, like I said, is to pull the whole window out, put the new seal pan in, recaulk all the windows, and go from there.
I mean, I get, I guess my, sorry, Mark.
No, go ahead.
I guess my thoughts are, is, of course, you know, we seal up the window, and then we put another hole in the, in that caulk joint or.
It's not in the caulk joint. It's in the bottom of the metal frame underneath.
Okay, well.
And actually, we'd be at the bottom.
That water would never get up to that metal frame, because it would be higher than the caulk joint. So the weep hole's either got to be at the stone level.
Well, or, or, which we got to seal up now is we're between the glazing, between the glass and the metal frame.
It's a hollow metal frame, and that water's going to be sitting on the stone before it ever, can ever come back out.
Well, that's.
Right?
Yeah, probably, because there's holes in the metal frame.
Let me, let me try a different tact here, because I think I understand what you're saying. So I have a question. Let me put it this way. How many windows are really in bad shape? I mean, are actively leaking?
Actively leaking right now, you've probably got about 20 of them.
Okay. How much does it cost to pull a frame and put a seal pan in, per window?
I never got that far with Dave. He never got me a number back that far.
Okay. We need to know what it is, one window.
Okay.
Okay? How much does it cost per window to do the silicone thing you're talking about?
Okay.
How much is that, do you know?
Uh, he gave me a rough bid for just the courthouse, around $13,000, just to do the.
That was all of them.
And how many windows are in the courthouse?
You're probably looking at 50 or 60.
Because what I would suggest doing is, depending on what the cost to pull these frames and redo them is, I would do a couple of them by pulling the frames, and I would do several of them doing this, and then see what happens over a year. Because then you'll have an actual comparison. If this fixes the problem and sealing the frames, pulling the frames and redoing it, you know, they get equal benefit, then it's a lot cheaper to do the whole nine yards or to do, do the silicone option you got in a weep hole. On the other hand, if that continues to create leakage problems, which I tend to agree with you, I think there's a likelihood of that, then we know we gotta go through and replace windows. And then you can get on plan to do it.
Yeah.
And start with the worst ones, work your way forward.
How many, how many of the windows that are really causing problems are third floor or higher?
Uh, second floor and up over there, pretty majority of them. This building is a different scenario. Where these windows in this building are leaking is the caulking that holds the windows in. If you go on to...
Sorry, I was-
Oh, you're fine. Keep going, keep going, keep going. Right there where the caulking meets the glazing is actually failing, and when the wind blows, the water gets in behind it. So that's gonna be a whole different process. That's basically them coming in, cutting out the old, the old caulking and recaulking the windows.
So you need a seal pan on those windows?
No, not-
So all the ones in the annex?
Does need the seal pans. They just need the, the glazing recaulked.
How much that cost?
Uh, he's giving me a rough bid to do the windows that are leaking right now, about 1,800.
I'd say get that done. That's an easy, that's just an easy fix right there, and it's not much cost.
We've got buckets standing on the-
I would do that right now.
But before we do that, how much of those, how much of these windows are etched, that the glass?
They're all etched.
They're all etched. I mean, should we, should we take a look at that first? I mean, our windows look terrible because they're, they're all etched from the rain, is that correct?
Well, I mean, the first thing to do is to seal them. I mean, you want to replace all the panes?
Well, I mean, I just, I think it's worth talking about before we caulk all this stuff up. I mean, I don't know that, uh, but-
How many, how many windows?
There's probably 30 to 40 in this building.
Because they'd basically pull the, pull the, the outside pane, is it double pained or?
They're double pained.
They have to take both out or just outside?
Yeah, it, it, it's a-
Sealed unit?
It's sealed unit.
Yeah, I don't know either, but I mean, you know, before we-
Call that.
Seal them up and then have to come back and do it again, because basically they just pull them out, put new ones in, and then recaulk it, right?
Mm-hmm.
So what I would suggest doing is get us a bid on how much it costs to replace the panes over here.
Okay.
We know it's 1,800 just to reseal the caulk. That gives us a price point to work at. I would find out what the cost per window is to do the sills in the courthouse versus the cost per window to do the, the, the other option, caulking and the weep hole. And then bring, get that as soon as you can and bring it back to us.
Is that an official bid that Jennifer wants to go through or you just want them to estimate right now?
I think we just need to get an idea what the dollar amount is.
I'll call.
And I don't know what that is, and we may have to go into a process of doing it. There'll be so much we have to do and... Okay. Is that good?
That'll work.
Good? Good?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay, next, next item on the agen, agenda is discussion of South Binder Lake Road Greenway Trail.
Eric stepped out.
Eric! All right, let's take a two-minute break. How about that? You want coffee? I'm gonna use the rest. Find Eric. Now he's gotta wait two minutes.
He's kicked back.
He said sometimes-
It's my pleasure.
Sometimes it's making you anxious.
Thank you.
I was starting asking why, why you get it finished, and you start it.
Sorry. I knew that, too.
Oh, no, I'll yell at you. Ain't worried about making you cry. You still gotta come back to work.
Still gotta stay? I can't quit yet.
I was putting a hole in the bottom of there, let water out, not let water in, is what I'm trying to figure out.
It's gonna be, get, lip comes down on the front window. Get your lip comes out from the glass, then it comes down, so we'll do it right up underneath. We'll put a couple on the door. That was what I was suggesting. The other question was, take the whole windows out and do silt runs? Well, if we take the windows out, maybe we need to look at upgrading the windows. Higher fishing windows, anyway.
All right. So, is he asking if pricing on windows?
No, South Binder.
Or just to fix these here? About how Chris was saying, let's look at windows, new windows, before you look at-
New panes. What does he mean, that, that it's damaged?
The weather has etched the windows over the years, so it's been in here. That's why they won't come clean.
Just have them tinted. Cover it up.
I think they already are tinted.
They've got it tinted.
Saying tint them, you don't have to worry about them.
I'd be aligned with the etching of these things. Because the bucket, the bucket didn't wrack or not, it's not cut in.
I, I don't disagree with that at all, but I think the leaking, we need definitely get-
Eric, you're up next.
Hold on. But if the leaking repairs are gonna cost a nominal amount, then we need to look at while we're spending money, do we start replacing a window here and there? Windows are expensive.
All right, we'll go back on South Binder Lake Road Greenway Trail.
Where's Binder? I've heard of Binder Lake.
It's Bender. That's the correct term.
I know, that's what you're gonna say.
It is the correct term.
I also call it Jefferson City, not City of Jefferson, so I get in trouble.
No, it's the City of Jefferson City. It is. They looked it up. They, do you remember that, David? It is. It's the City of Jefferson City.
I also call it Missouri, not Missouri.
It is Missouri.
We've been working with Parks and Rec with, uh, extending the greenway out there inside South Binder Lake Road. The way the, they had it originally designed, the original project is, our portion of the greenway trail was stopping at the intersection with the idea that the parks would hook onto it later. Since that time, we added the part all the way to Country Club that they were paying for. Uh, we were looking at this here. We had to, decided to change out a pipe. You can see on the drawing there. It, after looking at it, it was too bad a condition, so we're gonna change it out with the project anyway, which gave us an opportunity to possibly reconfigure the intersection. Talked to Parks and Rec, said, you know, here's an option for you, if you're interested. Do we want to extend this trail up to the ball field parking lot area by the sand vod of our ports? And, uh, had a visual put together, threw together some estimates, uh, worked with them, had a meeting a couple of weeks ago with them, and they were in favor of it. The committee, Parks Committee, the Parks Commission, last week, uh, wanted to table it to this week to see, um, kind of look at their budgets for future projects. And at last night's meeting, um, they, uh, gave authority to the parks to negotiate with us, whatever that becomes, um, to come up with a, a way to do this, where they would kick in up to 20, uh, 65,000 dollars.
They will do that?
They would put in up to 65,000 dollars, um, but would negotiate with us if there's some cost share that we would do on our-
What's the difference between these two?
Uh, I didn't make that real clear, but one's minimal work where we, if the county didn't participate at all with anything to be able to put a trail in and have the curb and gutter that they need to, uh, that would be the minimal amount. And then if we did curb and gutter on the other side and, and overlay the road in there, you know, brought everything up to where it should be, wouldn't have to do anything in the future, that would be the 80,000. So it's about a 20,000 dollar showing, give or take.
And they're gonna come to 65. We could put in 15 and that would cover?
Yeah.
Why do we have a 20% contingency?
Just-
It's a really big contingency.
I know, but without having any design work on it, you don't know for sure. So this, this is just a visual.
Time frame?
Time frame. Um, I could have it designed probably by next week or so. We would, we would just add, it would be mostly add-on quantities with the chain orders, just be add-on. There's a few items we had to do on some chain order to add extra grading and all that.
Still done by the end of the year?
This part, you know, by con, contractually, wouldn't have to be done.
Right.
Uh, but the main roadway does have to be done by the end of the year.
Okay.
So, um, if you want to give me authority just to kind of work out with them, um, what we would do, what they would do, I'll just run it through y'all, uh, through email and just kind of keep it moving.
I mean, overall, I don't, um, I mean, if they, ideally, if they'll do as much as they can, I mean, I, I kind of think that we, we ought to do some of the stormwater. I mean, that's something we'd have to do anyway. Um, the, uh, commercial approach, um, is that just for going into their ball fields or is that right there at, at Business 52?
Far, far north then.
Okay.
We have to do business, the Business 52.
Okay.
You know, as, as I look at it, I could justify us doing the roadwork and then doing the, the additional, there's a pipe and then there's a driveway approach to the ball fields and all that. A pipe extension because of the trail. There, there's things that, that they would need to do anyway, but you know, as far as, we could put the curb and gutter in and, and do the storm drainage work.
I'm good with the more robust option, just getting it done and not having to go back and revisit it, particularly if we can get that cost down a little bit.
I think it can come down. This was, I, I think, would be my highest amount of things. I think it will be less.
I'm, I'm good with the cost share. I think it'll make the whole project look all totally finished, so.
I agree. So, refresh my memory. What are we adding here? What are we?
The greenway was gonna stop.
Well, greenway, but curb and gutter.
And then we're gonna add greenway, curb and gutter here, just on the long.
This here is what we're looking at adding for this 80,000 or whatever.
It's just the stuff on the east side of South Binder Lake, right?
Probably from that commercial approach back, right? Probably from that commercial approach to the north, right off of Business 50?
Business 50, from there to the north.
On the east side of the road?
East side of the road. But there's all, there's curb and gutter on the west side of the road in front of the new ball field area, and we would want, want to connect the, those two. And that's that shorter piece on the north of the, the west side that you see.
Okay, just that little bit on the north?
Yeah.
But that's not sidewalk or anything? That's just curb and gutter there?
Curb and gutter and paving.
Yeah.
Putting new storm, storm pipes in and everything.
This would do, it would button up the whole area, um, connect everything. And I, I think it's a good deal to do. Additional cost and all that negotiation would be, you know, agreed to by you. I think we would need to do an, an agreement with them.
Right.
They'll mention that. We can work that out and get it to you next week.
I agree. Jeff?
I'd just, would rather keep it at the minimum. We don't have to have diamonds out there. It's a walkway, so.
Well, it's mainly getting the curb and gutter into their, you know, they redid a lot of their stuff out there on, on South Binder when they put in the ball fields and stuff, and so, um... Anyway, a lot of people use that, so.
We can get them to have more tournaments out there and be more user-friendly. I'm, I'm very much-
That can be in the agreement.
There you go.
There you go. Tell Bill we said that, yeah. I'm good with that.
Tournaments every weekend.
I mean, it can pay for itself right there.
Yep, yep. I agree with you. 100%.
Yeah, get some numbers together.
We'll, uh, we'll work it.
But you're okay with moving forward?
I'll probably get back to you next week.
Okay, so I think we're all good with moving forward. Obviously, uh, we can't do anything until we have an agreement.
Right. I'll work out the numbers and run it by y'all and then everything-
Sticking on agenda?
Yeah.
Okay, sounds good, and-
And you gotta do that quick.
If I'm not here, that's fine, because I've got, I'm out for a little bit in November.
Well, I'm, I'm out first week in November, too, so.
It's next week, or it's two weeks, or it's three weeks from now?
Good timing, guys. Deer season.
Are we looking out for you?
No, no, I'm back before deer season opens.
No, it's deer season right now.
I know.
We're looking out for your best interest.
Gun season?
What's your date's next week?
Uh, I think we have one Wednesday next week.
When's that?
I believe that's correct, isn't it?
We'll do it one minute.
Okay.
Just go with Melody and put it on the agenda.
Tuesday.
No, I think it's Wednesday.
Okay. Oh, dang, it is. Oh, yeah.
It's Wednesday, I think.
I'm asking that the time changed for the ribbon cutting and we got another meeting Tuesday and-
When is that ribbon cutting?
2:00 PM on Wednesday.
Next Wednesday?
Next Wednesday.
All right.
Okay, next item is update on stadium interceptor behind the Pringer Center.
This is what I sent you guys.
Mm-hmm.
The proposed, which Mark, you said, no, you should have had a, this is what I showed you about been running. This is the new one coming back that you should have on yours, what they're coming back with.
Pull it up here. Okay.
That was a ribbon cutting on Frog Hollow, wasn't it?
Yeah. What do we have to give them?
Eric has asked me, Eric Siemens from the city has asked me, I guess we've got to give them permission to use the land for a right-of-way, is what he's at, he's been talking to me about.
Maybe he should come up here at some point and talk to us about it, too. I don't know what, I don't know how big a right-of-way they need. I mean, it looks like it cuts across hard structure.
Yes.
You see that?
Yeah, they're gonna bore from the one tunnel or from the one manhole to the other one where the green line ties in underneath that fencing, and the rest they'd have to dig.
So they're gonna bore underneath the entire juvenile protection center?
No, it's not under the juvenile.
There's a green line that goes right through the middle of the building, doesn't it? Well, that's against the parking lot.
That's parking lot. That line there exists.
Oh, those, so the green is existing?
Yes.
So the red is what they're gonna build?
Yeah, the red is the new proposed manholes and, uh, new proposed sewer.
In general, I'm not in favor of this.
I don't understand why we're doing it.
The city is updating their sewers, and I, I don't know how I got involved, but I got the calls.
Tell Eric to come up here and let's have a discussion with, I, I think, no offense intended, Greg, I think we've got to have the city up here to have this discussion. I don't think you-
I don't know enough.
One, you shouldn't carry the water, and two, I don't think you can carry the water on sewer stuff, so.
I know just a, a touch about it. I mean, the reason it's being done is because of the EPA consent order. Um, we have some sewer overflows up by 54, and so ultimately, this, the project has to move forward in some fashion because of the EPA decree. So I think they're just looking at, you know, how can we replace, uh, this is part of the system that we're replacing now down, start at Marshall Street. Coming up, it's gonna come through Lincoln University. Uh, we put some new pipe in and ground out there in Stadium and, and plus, so this is just a continuation of that on Highway 54.
As far as I know, we're not part of the consent decree, so it doesn't- Does it really make any difference? I don't mean it in a bad sense.
Oh, no, it's not, but the reason, I mean, that's the reason that the project is taking place, um, is to, to do that, but as far as the alignment goes, I don't really know too much about it.
Because that fence right there, that's footings, not just fence.
I mean, I'd, I'd like to see it stay where it's at.
Take out a few trees, too.
Well, they already take, they already took out one tree, because I guess a tree grew over a manhole.
Yeah.
You know, some reason when they came in, they took it out.
I mean, they have an existing easement there somewhere. I can't, I don't know. So what we see with the squiggly lines?
The squiggly lines-
That's their existing?
I believe that is their existing. That would be going away.
Well, let's get them in here and let's talk to them.
Okay. I'll see if I can get them in here Wednesday.
You know, are they gonna give us all their easements back from where they're discontinuing the right-of-way? What's the disruption time? I don't have a fundamental objection to them fixing their sewer lines. That doesn't bother me any. I just want to understand, you know, what the impact on us is gonna be.
Well, that's, you know, if they move that closer to our property, then we, we can't build.
Right.
But then, um, if we ever need to expand, so.
I don't understand why they're moving it so close to sort of keeping along the existing line, but sure there's some reason there. All right, will you get in touch there, Eric, and find a date and bring him up here? I would like to be there for that. Signing a maintenance agreement with Century Link?
This is an annual agreement. Uh, I don't know, Dale, kind of explain what it is.
Yeah, um, this is the, uh, auto attendance that's used by the sheriff's office and the public administrator, or, excuse me, prosecuting attorney's office, where the, uh, they have primary call handlers and they process the calls and they drag and drop them to, you know, 50 different phones that they had and do that.
1,100 dollars?
Yeah. It used to be free and it's not free anymore, so it's the, uh, the great update, so.
Got any changes from last year?
No, it's the same. Uh, and we've actually, we started out only five licenses. I think we curtailed it to the three actual people who are really needing to use it, so.
So did it reduce the cost?
Yeah, there, it's a per, it's a per license.
So there is change, okay.
Per license is the same, but we've got fewer licenses.
Okay, thanks.
So 1,160 dollars total? I entertain a motion to approve the agreement.
So moved.
And just so you know, sheriff would pay for two-thirds of that.
And will the pro, and will the prosecutor pay for the other third?
I can't take it out of their budget. We didn't really budget for it in their budgets. It would be out of communication. Well, I guess we could put it out of maintenance, since this is maintenance. Dale has usually been used for all the department's maintenance within GR. This is kind of a hard thing to-
Well, why do they need it?
Why do they need it?
Well, they have, uh, I don't know, what's her, Laverne, whatever her name is, but she sits there and answers all the calls and she, I mean, they get all the-
Well, Melody answers all the calls.
Yeah, but she just has many extensions.
Yeah.
All the calls to the PA comes into one office in one area and it gets disused.
Yeah.
And she can't see, like, on a phone, who's on what line, so this software puts it on the computer for her to know what's, what's everybody doing, you know? She can transfer the calls.
She sees the call status for every phone in the apartment.
Sheriff actually has two of them on two different computers.
I'll second the motion. I mean, I just think that it needs to be charged back to the prosecutor and, I mean, if sheriff's paying two-thirds or-
I mean, I, I don't know how else.
So this is an up, this is an upgrade to the existing system?
No.
To put it on the computer?
It's already there. It's, we're just paying the next, next year for it.
Okay, I thought you just said she couldn't see it, and this will allow her to see it.
But she's already got it. I mean, it's, it's just for next year.
So we're, this is just status quo ante.
Yeah, right. We're not adding or subtracting anything. It's just next year's cost.
I mean, I just think it needs to be, you know, it's for them specifically, so it needs to be in their budget.
Sheriff pays two-thirds of this.
So next year it'll be in the prosecutor's budget. That's fine.
Yeah, if we're gonna get it for him.
Okay. Hey, got motion, seconded, enter discussion. Call roll, please. Yes.
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 Our roll call vote, agreement's approved. There you go. Discussion of TAP grant applications for Madison.
What made you go last?
Oh, well, it's like I can hear all kinds of interesting stuff. I don't know if Eric can give you any, but here's a little-
You just got on there, like-
Some information that I'm gonna give to the public works and planning committee tomorrow, and I'm gonna hand out, but thank you. Essentially what we've got, um, and I know that Larry- Essentially what we've got, um, and I know that Larry was involved in a meeting that we'd had with some people from the chamber, et cetera, several weeks ago when we were talking about how we might want to address, um, uh, some applications that we were gonna do for transportation alternative program funds, which is the new transportation enhancement, safe routes to school, po, that comes out of the new highway transportation bill, which is actually already old, but nonetheless, um, so essentially the city kind of is looking to do three different applications. Uh, the first one that we had listed there is a wayfinding system, which there aren't any actually attachments for that. But that project is something that, uh, that we're doing that's, which is basically going to have about two hundred thousand dollars worth of grant funds in the match for that. It's actually coming from donations from various and sundry community groups, uh, we get exactly through Old Town, downtown Jeff City and several other folks. And so that project, although I just wanted to make you aware that that, that's happening, it's basically gonna put some, potentially put wayfinding signs out on the highway, uh, near the Lafayette Street interchange, brought people downtown, little kiosks.
So you're gonna request two hundred and thousand and the community puts up fifty?
Correct.
Okay.
Um, and so we're looking at that project. And then the other two are really, you know, kind of why I was here to just sort of let you know what we were doing and to see if, uh, if that suited you. You know, we'd always talked about doing, um, improvements to Capitol Avenue, basically from Adams-ish street up to the prison.
You got it in the current cycle.
Right. And so there was, uh, ultimately there was, I think we were using what we were calling Old Town money, that was the earmark for it, and there's six hundred thousand dollars there. Um, in this conversation that we're having, we were sort of said, well, ultimately, we still have one point three million dollars worth of M S P, um, money. Also, perhaps that money could be used in the Lafayette Street, or not the Lafayette, I'm sorry, the Capitol Avenue area. And the Old Town money could potentially be shifted, and what we're proposing is shifting that over to, um, uh, Madison Street by the Cap region to do some beautification, street lights, uh, stuff there. So essentially, that's kind of, you know, the premise of these is basically representing that shift in, in the sales tax funding. Now granted, there's no guarantee that we're going to get either one of these grants. Uh, and so in some ways, it's.
My understanding of the tap grants are the more we put up as match, the more likely we are to get the.
That is part of the, that is part of the equation. Uh, the grant will match up as, up to as much as eighty percent.
Right.
But however, there, the way the scoring happens, if you match more, you get additional points in the scoring system. It doesn't guarantee anything, but, um, I think the Capitol Avenue, certainly I think there's some very positive aspects to that one, um, you know, in that, you know, we're, we're sort of tying together M S P and the downtown, you know, some of the tourism, there's high pedestrian use in that area. We have Dooley Towers. There's a tie to transit, you know, so it kind of hits a lot of the, a lot of the grant buttons, uh, so to speak. And so, you know, if everyone is okay with, with looking at using M S P funds as match for this project, we think we can do, we can basically make it look like High Street.
I think it'd be great. I think that's what we, when we originally, that was before we were up here when we did it, I mean, when we originally put the money in, we talked about this, and we also talked about how if there was any money left over in any other project, that we wanted it to go to the streetscapes.
I didn't necessarily say for beautification, it's street lamps and stuff like that, but the streets.
But we talked about sidewalks, park, curb and gutter, and that's what, this is all part sidewalk, curb and gutter, and then.
Right. What the, what the grant or what we're envisioning, we actually have Bartland West putting the application together for us. Um, you know, basically it'd be new sidewalks, new curb and gutter, uh, and basically the same street lighting system that we have on High Street.
And mill and overlay.
And be a, yeah, right. We're probably envisioning just raising the curb, so it would just be an overlay, not necessarily a mill.
Okay.
But, uh, but, you know, that had to be worked out in the details, but, and then, uh, you know, the other, there'd be some trees put back, because a lot of those gum ball trees are gonna have to go away in the project. And so, you know, to, to make that look like it does now, uh, there'd be some landscaping that would have to happen.
When's that gonna be in, that grant gonna be issued?
The, the grant application is due on the fourteenth of November, and I think we're anticipating to, to know an answer sometime in February or March. And the other project that we're looking to is.
Yeah, hang on. Let's deal with one before we go to the next. You guys generally okay with that on Capitol?
So basically that's three blocks.
Correct. Right. It would be essentially three full blocks, and then we're also looking at doing, uh, some improvements on the sidewalk down to Dooley Hamilton Towers along Jackson Street. And then also, there's a piece of bad sidewalk, basically between the work that we did a couple of years ago on the stormwater there at Monroe to Adams. That one side is really pretty shaky. And so just to sort of complete the section, basically from the Capitol building then, out to the prison. You know, we're gonna take care of that.
And when we did, and we did the other projects, we did all that with.
That other project, so.
So what do we got left in M S P money then? When you're talking about using our leftover?
Well, how much do you have left?
That would be it.
How much do you have left?
There's one point three-ish million in M S P funds. That was earmarked. Well, no, that would be combined.
That is the city county cooperative project money that we said.
Because you all had put in a million dollars for the enhancement.
Did you put in a half?
And we put in a half.
That's one and a half.
And then we also spent some.
You put up a million, but you're supposed to get money back on the.
Right. So I mean, it could be slightly more, you know, depending on, depend on how much we actually spent on the mold. I am not part of that.
I mean, I think that's a great, I think it's a great project. I would be very much in favor of getting this done. I think it helps downtown. I think it helps M S P. I think it helps Old Town. I think it kind of punches all the buttons that we talked about in the past.
I don't disagree. I think it's a great project. I was asking how much money we had left.
Right.
Right. And so the other, the other bit, so.
So we have, we have a million and a half left in M S P money.
We do have a million and a half.
Except but for the one, or a hundred and forty thousand that we committed to tie the rest of Lafayette Street from McCarty down to Miller.
Oh, that's right. I remember that.
Right. So there's, you know.
So that's the one point three. Okay, so we have one point three. I guess that's right.
After the, isn't that where the enhancement money went?
Uh, no. That's after the enhancement money.
That's after the enhancement money. Okay.
So that was part of MoDOT's project to go.
When we did Lafayette Street, um, you know, we did that in two phases. We did the phase up by the federal courthouse, and then we did the second phase, basically from Capitol down to McCarty. And at the time, um, the E I S study that was done on the expressway had envisioned that McCarty, or Lafayette Street would actually be raised up to decrease the slope on the ramps coming off the highway. And in that scenario, basically, they were gonna have to raise that grade kind of all the way back to McCarty. And so we stopped our project.
Like a hundred and fifty yards short or something like that.
Right. And so to allow for that grade change, well, ultimately they decided not to do the grade change. And then MoDOT's like, well, we don't have to go there, so we're gonna have to.
That's outside the scope of our project?
Right, right. So that's where that money.
I think that's good.
I mean, I'm okay with it. I mean, I, I assume it's just, uh, exposed aggregate sidewalks. I mean, be no brick, brick in between, uh.
Right, I mean, there's no design. I mean, at this point.
Stamp concrete on the crosswalks like we've done.
It could well be, um, you know, I think we're gonna try to make it look as similar as we can. I know that we've actually talked about, when we go back and overlay High Street, which is probably gonna have to happen in the next two years or so, um, we're probably gonna use a different treatment on those crosswalks. We might use a thermoplastic, somewhat similar to what we put down there at Lincoln University, rather than do the painted ones, because it's a lot of maintenance and headache for our guys when they have to close it to repaint them. So, uh, we might go with a different treatment, but would look similar to what we've got there. They've actually got imprinted, crosswalks similar to that too, which could really give you the brick pattern, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think the crosswalks have held up well. I, I mean, I think we've just had some issues with the, the stamped brick look, um, in between the curb and the.
Right, there's some little deterioration that holds salt and whatnot, so.
Yeah, yeah, so. But, I'm good.
Okay?
Okay.
Uh, so if you all are good with that, then we'll present that information to the public works and planning tomorrow.
Okay, now let's do the other project.
The other one is up by Capitol Region, and it's kind of, uh, it's probably a, a project that doesn't, in my opinion, probably doesn't have a high likelihood of being approved.
Which means this is the one that'll get approved. No offense intended. It always works that way. You go, ah, we should throw that one in as an extra, and that's what they grab hold of.
Uh, so essentially, you know, we're doing all the work to get, uh, additional access into, um, Monroe Street with the project that we're doing that George Butler has designed. Well, as part of that design, or part of that traffic study that George Butler did, they also recommended, uh, the construction of some right-hand turn lanes into the new, um, hospital, uh, building, you know, from the, from the highway, from Monroe Street. And so, you know, basically we have a lot of people come flying off the highway, and it takes them a while to slow down, et cetera, et cetera. And so this project kind of addresses those entrances and then some traffic calming elements. Uh, in this case, what we're proposing.
Traffic calming.
Yeah. What we're proposing is raised. Raised pedestrian crossings.
How about a speed bump?
Well, that's kind of.
That's a raised pedestrian crossing.
That's just a, that's just a nicer term.
I was talking about the traffic calming.
Unfortunately, when you, the way it's set up now is you're gonna go across the race, the speed bump, while there's people walking on it.
Some people hit speed bumps faster just for fun.
There you go.
They can make a.
What about those vibration strips?
Good noise.
That are used on some off-ramps as you go up off-ramp.
Right, there are some. You could, there, that is a possibility. Sometimes those are frowned on in, of course, this is a strictly residential area, but, you know, there are apartments there. They're noisy. They're really, you know, and so people complain about the noise that's created by those rumble strips or, um.
So that's what that raised crosswalk would be, is just a, a raised?
Essentially, well, a speed bump, you know, like you see in a parking lot is boom, boom.
Right.
Essentially what this would be, about over a distance of about eight feet, you would climb six inches. And then you'd have a flat tabletop kind of effect, and then it would slope back down.
What's the idea was that?
It's, they've been around for a while.
I thought you said raised crosswalk. You didn't put a bridge across.
That's what I thought, too.
That's what I'm saying. The first time it gets used, there's somebody in it. It's gonna slow you down, because you're gonna try not to hit the person walking across the street.
What, um, so I went to, I went to, uh, meet, uh, Gasper Calveruso the other day, and I parked behind the First Baptist Church and.
Uh-huh.
But anyway, I, I just don't see, why do we need a crosswalk there? Who's gonna be going across that road there? I mean, I, I had a hard time getting across there for one thing, and that was, you know, at rush hour, but, uh, anyway.
And again, I think that's part of, if we go back to my first statement in the beginning.
Unlikely to get approved.
Right. I think part of the reason that this application is being considered is that, you know, is somewhat at the request of Capitol Region. I think they have some ideas of trying to beautify the front of their building. You know, they've got that, uh, limestone bluff there that their sort of parking garage is tucked into. You know, I think they've got some, some visions of spending some money to sort of put a face on that. And we're ultimately interested in trying to get some other way to make some of the rest of this a little prettier. And so ultimately, I think part of this is to try to address that question of making this prettier, and this is a way of doing it. So, um, so I, you know, so how do you blend that into a application for transportation funds? And so, for those reasons, I don't think it's a very strong application, but I think we're going to submit it. The plan is to submit it anyway and see what happens.
I mean, I think it makes a lot more sense to have a raised crosswalk down towards their O B G Y N clinic and, uh, maybe one down there.
Right.
Um, because that would be along Franklin Street there or something. That would be a much more used, probably crosswalk there. And I assume that on Capitol Region's side, they'll be putting in sidewalk all along there.
Correct. Yeah, the, basically from what was Woodlawn down to Franklin, that's all new sidewalk that's gonna be installed with the construction of the building. And so what this is proposing is a sidewalk then on the opposite side. And you bring up the O B G R, O B G Y N, you know, so Capitol Region hasn't really given us any numbers, but they said, well, you know, that's our facility too, and potentially we could have people walking back and forth between the two facilities. So, you know, but they haven't given us any numbers.
Why wouldn't you run the sidewalk down the east side and just have one crosswalk?
They are.
They're running the sidewalk down the west side and having two crosswalks. So if you're gonna walk from the hospital, you're gonna have to cross.
Well, you could do either one. Well, essentially it goes back to the traffic calming. You know, you're trying to use a raised pedestrian crosswalk as a traffic calming element. So, um.
Traffic targeting. Target the walkers, and that's what it comes down to. People are gonna come up that ramp full speed, and there's gonna be somebody walking across the crosswalk.
So. Well, and, and ultimately, it's the end, it's, it's the end of the line. You know, once you've walked up this far, you're either going to the church or you're going to the hospital, because there isn't anything else. You know, other than that, you're gonna walk out onto the highway.
I just don't like the project. I don't know. That's just me personally.
I got, yeah.
I'm not crazy about it.
I, I wouldn't.
I'll say it nicely.
I don't know that I want to redirect all our Old Town, all, and it's all of our Old Town money into this project.
Well, and it would, because the Old Town, the, what we had, we had six hundred thousand combined, um, going into, uh, Old Town. I think what we're considering here would be about two hundred and fifty, so it wouldn't be all of it, but, uh.
But you're requesting two fifty in a grant.
Right, it'd be two fifty.
So it's a five hundred thousand dollar project.
Correct.
And once we submit the grant, that it, to me, indicates that we support doing this project at some point, which means we're kind of publicly committing that this is a project we want to do. And that means then they're gonna be, show up and say, well, you didn't get the grant, but you got the money.
Well, that, there is a possibility.
Where's the, where's the Old Town group at on this? What would they, I mean, would they say, yeah, that's a great idea? We think it'd be great for Old Town.
Have you guys taken it to Old Town?
They had a meeting yesterday morning with the Old Town folks. I'm not entirely for sure what, I haven't talked to anyone who went to that meeting, but.
I'd be inclined to work with them on it, and if they say, hey, this is a great idea, because that's who we're trying to help, is Old Town.
I, I would want to hear from Old Town directly before I would support moving this forward. So I would say that's a no, a conditional no until we hear more.
Where do y'all have to submit these?
The application is due on the, at noon on the fourteenth.
Tomorrow, yeah. Tomorrow.
Well, I mean, I guess what it means is that, uh, when I go to the public works and planning committee tomorrow, you know, I'll just have to relate to that.
Tell them we, we love, we love the Capitol Avenue one. You didn't get that same vibe.
We didn't say no. We said no condition.
Maybe. Oh, that's fine. That's, that's fine.
We said no, but. Did I give you enough?
Yeah.
For now?
That gives me enough.
And then we'll talk to Old Town and we'll try to get them up here. In fact, we probably ought to get them up here anyway. Okay.
No, that's just fine.
Thanks, David. Appreciate it.
Yep. Good work with you all.
All right. Is there anything else come before the commission?
You guys had asked about the transfer that I was trying to do on the Safe Schools contingency to, um, at Safe School. And basically, this is additional money, I guess, Eric.
We, uh, hired a, a right-of-way consultant to help us get the right-of-way. We just don't have time to do it. Paul, there's thirty-nine parcels that we have to have. We're actually late on it with the grant and all that stuff through MoDOT, so. I kind of estimated high on it. Don't think we'll need it. We only had in that, in that budget line item, the engineering for, to do the design work. And so we didn't have anything else. There wasn't anything unencumbered in that, so that's why we had to.
So this is to allow us to acquire the right-of-way?
Seventy-five hundred bucks. Just to give us, just, we've already paid one bill out of it, I guess. I, I thought it was already transferred last week, but, uh.
Okay. I'm okay. I just didn't know what it was for.
Did she get it done?
What's that?
They get it done, or?
We got, I think we got, we're over two-thirds of them. We got over two-thirds.
When, when, are we bidding that this fall?
It'll bid, no, it'll bid January. It's in next year's budget. It's on a timeline with MoDOT, so.
I didn't exactly follow where it was, why we.
Out on Rainbow Drive, where they're doing, we got the Safe Schools.
Right.
And we do the sidewalk project out there. You get right-of-way for thirty-nine different parcels. And we have a time limit on that grant.
We hired outside help in the past.
And we have a time limit on that grant, too, is part of the problem.
But we didn't foresee this cost, or we didn't foresee it coming in this budget year?
We didn't foresee hiring an outside consultant.
At the time, you know, we didn't foresee this, but it got to the point, this year's exceptionally busy and.
How much was it?
Seventy-five hundred. Out of their contingency. I just asked what, to know what it was. I didn't, didn't have an objection to it. I just asked to know what it was, because I didn't know what it was.
Did you email us this already about?
No.
I don't think I did. Realistically, we're probably looking at a couple of thousand. It cost him.
For basically them to make the phone calls and talk and negotiate with their folks and.
She's going out knocking on doors and it's, it's money well spent. I can assure you of that.
Well, that's what we got contingency for, too.
Meaning you don't have to get an airfoil when you're there.
What's that?
Meaning you don't have to get an airfoil when you're there. You don't do it.
I really don't have time to.
Right.
Joe Braun would probably be good about doing that.
Exactly. Money well spent. Now, we're just, this is exceptionally busy this year.
Joe would spend an hour at everybody's house, though.
Okay. Anything else come before the commission?
Not a bad thing. He's a good guy.
Going once, going twice. I entertain a motion to stand recess.
Recession.
So I moved.
Second.
All his favorites say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose, motion carries, commissioner standing recess.
Well, that was a fairly quick meeting. I thought.
I thought we'd be a lot longer.
Yeah.
Let's get this.
Did you sign it?
Yeah.
Betty. I can't even sign this one. No, you didn't sign this one.
Oh, did you pass the note?
You signed the other one.
Oh, okay. I was like, I already signed out.
Debbie.